We done had a prayer, pled glee. This is a public hearing for Monday, February 13th. Okay, let me see what this is about.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lewis, I appreciate you coming to see us.
This is a rezoning. A planning commission met for a regular meeting on Thursday, January 12th, '23, to discuss a rezoning request for 2301 West Jackson Street from R-75 residential to R-75 residential mobile home. The planning commission recommend approval of the rezoning request with the following: An amendment that the portion of the property, that is, the side of the former rail spur referenced as a mound silver approximately 600 feet long by 20 foot wide, not be included in the rezon. This gap is not wide enough for development, but would still allow access for a rear entrance if desired, but would not split the existing R-75 zones to the north and south. Okay? So, Scott, they done, the commission, I mean, the planning commission has met with it. It's okay?
Yes, sir. They're recommending approval.
Rezone.
I think we got Dustin here.
Have we got anybody for it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Seawalk Dustin said.
The planning commission, they did meet regarding this on the 12th of January. They did approve it with the amendment that was probably up on there. There weren't really any objections to that.
Based on the history, since they already have an existing mobile home.
Yes, sir. There's an existing mobile home part right next door to it.
So, they just gonna basically be expanding?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The plan is to expand it over into this additional parcel.
How many more mobile homes will be going in there?
Uh, maybe a question if I understood too.
About how many is gonna be added to it?
Yes, sir. Probably do it about the same way. If anybody's familiar with the area, they're pretty separated. They're large lots out there. So, we don't know quite yet. We're talking to Tiller, Warner, and Sewer about adding on to the sewer system. We're gonna do our own pump stand, pump station. So, if doing that, that would permit us to help us with the layout, but we're still in talks with that. And Georgia Power got laying in our underground power. Estimated could be 30 to 40.
More trailers.
So, these trailers, this lots that you all will have where people buy it and put their own mobile home, or you furnish them?
We do a combination of the two. We provide the lots. Some of the homes we're buying, we buy new mobile homes. Most part, we've added 14 new mobile homes out there. We tore down all the existing mobile homes. And it's getting to be pretty derelict out there. When we purchased it from bank, so we've kind of re-done it. We've added some infrastructure, street lighting, security purposes. Trying to make it very nice, a horrible housing.
Okay. Are you gonna pave the streets? I mean, is it gonna be, is it gonna be dirt streets?
No, we put milling down, crushed milling, recycled asphalt.
So, we do that? Don't we? I thought this is, had to be paved.
No.
It's not a public street. It's a private, private drive.
Private drive?
Yeah.
Just to give them access into their.
So, Bell Street, all those streets are paved, ain't they? They're not.
They're not through streets. They're platted streets.
Okay. Go on. Any of y'all, y'all got anything on it?
Same requirements on that one.
So, there's no, there's no opposition from anyone?
Yeah, we'd ask.
Dustin, I got a question.
I haven't had any come across me, uh, as far as here. I don't know where anybody here that had any opposition.
Guess we did all out two gillens with the signage and.
Yes, sir. Signs were placed out about three, three and a half weeks ago, and it's also been.
Dustin, I got a question for you on another trailer park, not concerned with these two rock hybrid one on Augusta. I mean, cars were lavvied. How are y'all coming along with it cleaning that one up?
We're out on cars well.
Well, cross from OTC.
Yeah, cross from the college right there.
Uh, the last I've heard from James regarding that, they went out there and they, uh, they mailed out letters to the property owners to get that straightened up. They have been getting some results from it. I can't really speak any further on that, but since I don't, they have any.
Okay. You're talking about P. Hill Beach.
What about, what about the trailer park over off of Cherokee Avenue?
They got that cleaned up, man. They got cleaned up.
All right. Is any oppositions on it? Any oppositions in there?
I haven't heard none.
No opposition? Okay. I hear a motion. Well, we done ended the meeting. This is, we, we carried over. We got to carry it, that's right. Okay, we're gonna carry it over to the meeting. That's right, we didn't hear it. Okay. No opposition? No commission comments? I hear a motion to adjourn this hearing.
Make a motion.
Got a motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing adjourned. Okay. Now, let's go on into the meeting. Let's call the regular meeting. Five o'clock is 5:19. Let's go ahead and call the meeting order. And we've had a pledge of leave. We're gonna let that ride, so we're gonna go on into the meeting. Okay. Okay, let's approve the minute, meeting minutes for January 23. The work session, the public hearing, regular meeting, and the call meeting. I hear a motion on that.
So, movement, Chairman, we approved the work session minutes of January 9th, public hearing January 9th, the regular meeting of January 9th, and the call meeting of January 23rd.
Okay. All right, I got a motion.
Second.
Got a second. Okay, let's, let's vote on it. Mr. Burse.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
All right.
We need to back up to number four to approve the agenda.
Four? Let's see. Oh, yeah, we need to approve the agenda. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I, I want to mention too, item A was removed from the work session, so we won't do item A.
Item A?
A, as in apple. That's, that was the fire station.
Okay.
It was put on here.
Where's Borough, what's their fire station? Okay.
So, that one will, that will come off.
We'll move that.
And then at the end, we'll add the rezoning for the, the public hearing.
Okay, we need to back up there to four, then approve the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I hear a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda. Sit forth.
Sir.
You got a motion and a second. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burse.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard. Now, go to the agenda items, and A has been removed.
Yes, sir.
From the agenda on the fire station. Little further notice. Okay, B, request to approve the dirt road paving project list. Okay, y'all got a motion on how you wanna go with that? Which ones we wanna do?
I think we need to bid this thing out to see exactly where the numbers are gonna come in at, because I'm.
We got to give them a list so that which one we're gonna vote out.
Oh, that's why we're voting on is the roads?
Yeah, we just voting to let them, let them bid it out. Is that right, Scott?
Yes, sir. If you pick which ones you wanna try to go ahead and do this first round, then we'll put those out to bid.
Put them out to bid. So, y'all got the list.
Only thing that concerns me on this list is, you know, we paved rail road, and now we're gonna do Bank Lane, and then you're gonna go to the other side, do Slash Pine over to Wadley, but you gonna have Bank Road and Elmer Thrift still dirt.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna be eating up the concrete on both, I mean, the new asphalt on both ends.
That's where you start. You can't get it all.
Why not?
You got plenty of money?
Money.
I got that thrift money.
Oh, you broke. We're gonna have to, and may have to cut this back. Some of these may not get finished. I mean, we'll, we'll have to look at the, when it comes in on the bid, we see what money we got.
And then we'll have to look at the money.
Then, yeah. Then we'll borrow some money from it then.
All right.
But, I mean, if you, if it pleases the commission, you could actually just go with the first, I believe that is the first nine there?
Eight.
One through nine, or one through eight, whichever.
Yeah.
The whole top half?
We.
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman. We've been presented with the 2023 local funds proposed projects numbered one through 10. My motion is to instruct the manager and engineer to prepare documents to go out for bid for number one through eight on this list as the first part of the project. Bring it back to the board.
I second that motion.
You got a second, okay.
How about Astoria? Since that road's in the worst shape than any of these.
I would, I would accept an amendment to add that if that's another.
That's on the Astoria.
That's on now. These are the dirt roads. Wait now, we don't go back to the list on the resurfacing, right?
You're talking about doing all of it?
Is it all of it?
Well, you got. The top part is to pave the remaining section, and then that resurfacing is to fix what's already paved.
Right.
And it's in bad shape, so, yeah, that, that's just what Commissioner Barnard said would actually do the complete road.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we, we still gonna take this, what he's, his motion.
We can.
And then we're gonna do a resurfacing motion.
Yes, sir. And then we can add that, that other part of Astoria.
Okay.
So, do you agree in your motion to include that? Whatever Steve came up with.
Right.
Do one through, just go do one through eight plus priority number two.
Only serve. That's it. Yes, sir.
Set that.
Okay. You got, you got a second. Okay. All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burse.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
I want to comment on this one. Like Astoria Road, the part that's already paved now, we went out the other day riding and looking. I wasn't aware this road was this bad a shape. If I knew that, I would, we'd already had that thing fixed a long time ago. I mean, Astoria Road, it's got potholes in the lot just right here. I just plan to bury it for the people that lives out there on that road.
Need fixing. I saw that.
And I apologize to my constituents out there letting that road get in a mess like that, but nobody has called, you know, pushed it.
Plus, it has an active church on that road.
We'll let them go out for bid. We'll see what it looks like.
Yes, sir.
Look at the video. Okay. Now, request to add Juneteenth to the Ware County approved holiday.
Mr. Chairman, I like the, oh, promotion that we add this Juneteenth to the Ware County approved holidays. I think it'd be a great move on part of the county, and as I said, we'll be pretty much like following suit with a lot of other cities and counties in Georgia that have already adopted, have already recognized it one day, paid holidays for their employees, and I think it's be a good move on our part.
And you said there, there's already been like a third of the counties in the state already approve it?
Thirty-three cities and 13 counties. That was the last year, when I checked.
First time, there was 159.
Yeah. But it just passed last year, June. Matter of fact, it hasn't been quite a year, June last year when it passed.
I'd like to take a look, Mr. County Manager, at, and Commissioners, if we add Juneteenth. Let's, let's think real serious about Veterans Day, because they're, you know, veterans, in my opinion, are overlooked a lot. I mean, they really are. I mean, I know that there's a lot that happens, and there's a lot that do a lot for veterans, but we don't have a specific day dedicated to just them.
They don't have their holiday paid holiday.
Right.
Have they ever had it? Jerry Trump Veterans Day up there in California, because I know.
I'd say.
They had it. Some places would trade, they traded swap holidays, maybe like a day after Thanksgiving or something like that for a holiday, you know? So, I don't know if they ever had Veterans Day and removed it or what.
I don't know.
Have you heard any comments from employees when we?
Um, the only, the only comments I heard when it was first discussed is a few comments about that they, most employees liked, well, the ones that come in, they were, they liked it the way they were because there was some switch with some of the holidays to get the day after Thanksgiving.
Right.
And then also get the day after Christmas, and that's why.
They wanted to keep that.
They wanted to keep that because, you know, they just felt like that's what everybody at that time wanted. That was done many years ago, I believe. Wasn't that true, Michael? Yeah.
Well, I think if we, uh, how many moms and grandmas are we gonna make mad if we take the day after Thanksgiving away from them?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's the day after Thanksgiving.
Right.
You know, that's, that's the biggest travel holiday of the year, is Thanksgiving.
And that's why I was saying, I wouldn't advocate for swapping out one of the holiday for just adding this to the list of paid holiday they would have, you know, and not take away what they already have, because like I said, the day after Thanksgiving and, especially the day after Thanksgiving, because you think Thanksgiving, Thursday, Friday, you go, if we took that away from the Friday, then you have to be trying to get back, then you're back on your off days, Saturday and Sunday, so I never advocated for, you know, taking away that. I'm just saying add the Juneteenth as one of the paid holidays.
I wouldn't, I mean, I, I think if you're gonna add a holiday, I think that should go to a vote. Let taxpayers decide that, because you looking at, you're taking everybody, I mean, they pay a $40,000, $50,000 a year to have a holiday? I mean, that's kind of making it rough on the working man.
Well, not really. I mean, what we're doing right now is, like I said, I'm gonna go before the board, that's why, basically why we up here elected officials to, you know, make these decisions, you know, that in the best interest of the citizens, and all these other holiday, they were voted on by a commission, you know, at some point in time.
Well, I'll, I'll second Mr. Burse's motion as moved.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
How can we get Veterans Day to celebrate? How can we get Veterans Day to county?
If I'm not mistaken, I think the county, don't we use Veterans Day on Thanksgiving?
No.
Or Christmas? We don't use it at all?
I think Presidents.
Presidents' Day.
They swap out.
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
Presidents' Day, yeah.
I can't remember.
Well, maybe we can come back at a later date and just keep it in the back of our minds about the veterans.
And I think that'd be a good move, you know, for the veteran, because like I say, Veterans Day are important. I mean, I got sons are veteran, I got two granddaughters in the Navy, so military's all around, and I think, like I say, and I agree.
And that's something maybe we can bring back up, you know, in three, six months and take another look at. Definitely don't wanna forget them.
No.
Don't, we gotta keep them up in the forefront, but I think we need to take baby steps right now and do one at a time.
Okay.
Because we don't know what the future holds. I mean, look what we doing with AC units. You just never know.
Any more? That's it? All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burse.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
No, for the reason, if we can't have Veterans Day also, I vote no.
And I vote no.
Veterans Day is November 11th.
Got three. Okay, now, county road right-of-way mowing contract extension. We wanna, I hear a motion that we gave, give it to the.
I make a motion. We set the right-of-way mowing contract extension for.
One more year.
Mowing three times a year, plus trash pick up twice a year.
And that's about the same company?
About the same.
Same company, yes, sir.
I second his motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? The only change that be made then is we adding one more trash pick up. Is that right? Okay.
Mr. Brandon, Mr. Engineer, is there any way, I know they wanna pick up trash sometimes before they mow, but is there a way to do it after they mow? Because it seems like that's one of the biggest messes.
They all scattered it, then.
You gonna have the best sink, because if they hurt everybody with their mowers, they gonna cut it all to pieces.
Yeah, you gonna find it, then.
You, you do, you do see a lot of ore sometimes after you mow, it's a lot more noticeable, but he gonna wanna move his contractors in to come and pick it up, and then they gonna.
Come right behind him.
Come right behind him with the mow.
Okay.
So, they're, they're, you know, $25,000 for where that charge is. So, I'm sure if we wanted to come back around afterwards, he probably wants to charge us another fee to do that. Another fee as much as the $25,000.
Another reason too, probably pick up trash before you move. Tires and stuff, wood, logs, it's out there that's fell off the trucks and stuff.
Be a danger to him.
Be a danger to him.
Yes.
So, we're gonna ask them before the first mowing and before the last mowing to be picked up. Okay. All right. I, I got a motion and a second then. Let's vote. Mr. Burse.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Chair vote down to the man. The purchase request of the air conditioning unit three for the courthouse.
I make a motion that we accept a bid from Trane as stated for the other three, since they are the main ones that's already replaced.
All three of them.
That we're gonna got. I, I'd rather stick with the same company.
Okay, we got a motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burse.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, let's get what going back. Scott, you mentioned about the, the fan mower. Have they already put their mower in?
Uh, they were putting in it today, I think, or maybe end of last week. I can't remember exactly. And the reason why is because they don't have, it's not operating at all.
So, no choice but to put it in?
Yeah, you got to, because they can't work over there unless they have air.
These units ain't gonna come in no time soon.
No, it'd be wild.
They gonna have to run, have to fix it.
Yeah, it, it could possibly be, uh, close to the end of the calendar year before we even get them.
Something else I.
We might could ask for a reduction on that, but he might give you something back on it.
But.
Contract.
And also, we, uh, how many of those portable units do we have over there now?
Uh, eight, I think. Seven or eight. Little small ones.
So, whenever they get through all this, we ought to have seven or eight.
Yeah, we could put those up.
Units coming back to us.
Yes, sir. We could use them for other places and put them in storage. They're a little floor air conditioner.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but I just didn't want them to start walking.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Okay. All right, let's hold on that. Go ahead and order. Okay, F.
We didn't vote on it, did we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did. We already voted.
He brought it up, up after.
Yeah, I was just after.
The ordinance of 2023-01 establish maximum speed limit in the Augusta Springs subdivision. Okay. Which one is that, please?
You ready for a motion?
Motion on it?
I make a motion to establish the maximum speed limit in Augusta Springs subdivision at 25 miles an hour.
I second the motion as moved.
You got a motion and a second. Is any discussion on it?
I got a question. How do we arrive at this speed limit?
Uh, I believe the sheriff and.
Sheriff.
The sheriff said.
Recommended.
He said the speed limit in the county, right?
Now, that's pretty low.
Residential area.
That's a residential, that's a residential area. That's the maximum speed.
Well.
That's state, that's state of Georgia.
I know, but he's put up some of the wrong roads, though.
This is short residential area, subdivision.
Where's that map at? Look at that.
If I may, Mr. Commissioners and Mr. County Manager.
Is it church?
Madam Attorney. When this just come up.
Pebble Hill Church.
I had a.
All these right here.
Somebody called me over the weekend on Guilford Road. There's some, there's a lot that's not cleaned up, that's just like growing debris. You know what I'm familiar, you familiar with that, Brandon? Over off of Guilford down at the end. Okay, there, there's a lot that's got a bunch of overgrowth in it, and I've had, well, the captain at Police Department and several other people come to me that live in that area, and they, we had one complaint about speeding on Guilford, and we, we found out who that was, and that gentleman's been talked to, so he slowed down, but there's a lot. When you're going down Guilford, when you're gonna go turn west on the end down there, there's a deputy that lives right there on the corner. Right across from that deputy is a, a lot that's never been cleared, but when they come in there to clean it, they cut back the bottom piece, but the top pieces are still hitting vehicles, and people's complaining about them hitting vehicles, one of them being the captain from the Police Department, because they're scratching his police truck.
Well, then, did you get out there and clean that up then?
Well, it ain't his lawn. They can't clean somebody else's lawn.
There's just that one down there that's dirt, that Sand Hill Farm. Just the only one that's dirt. Says right here, there's some dirt right there, dirt portion.
Just right down there.
I guess that's the only one.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
If you know where David Bullen lives on this side?
Oh, that must be paid.
Right on the other side of him. So, around Guilford.
Okay.
Sir?
I hear a motion.
Forgot one, though.
Yeah, I made the motion, Timmy seconded it.
I seconded it. And he, okay, you got a motion and a second, then. Any more discussion? All right, let's move on. Mr. Burse.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard. Chair votes out. Okay, appointment to the Ware County Board of Possessions. Here, let's leave that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation to reappoint Darryl Robinson to be reappointed to the Ware Cross, Ware County Board of Possessions for a three-year term.
I got a second.
Is this his second term?
They can serve as long as
They can serve as long as they want to?
Yep.
I'll second. Mr. Barnard?
Got a second. Okay. Any discussion on it? Not, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair votes out. Okay. This is appointment for the Ware Cross, Ware County Land Bank Board. Okay. You say it got to be a commissioner?
No, sir. I had that just, that's what I was just reading. Uh, it can be a uh, a citizen as long as they're in the work, in the unincorporated area that can.
Unincorporated area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Who wants to be?
They would have to be in the
Michael Brooks, we put him on.
Can we table this?
Can we put Mr. Brandon or Mr. Brooks on?
Can we table this to the next meeting to get some things to present back to you on?
Yeah, we ju- just table this and then put it on next.
Make sure we clear, Scott, on this. You said it's got to be someone from the unincorporated?
Yeah, but let me verify that to be certain.
Because I was on there.
Yeah.
And I'm in, I was in the city. Yeah. I, I, I didn't think it had to be a commissioner, I was just
Right, okay. But I will, I'll verify that and make certain.
Okay.
Okay. We'll uh, table this one then.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, let's go to appointment to the Ware Cross, Ware County Development Authority. Now, that one would be be that uh, who is that on that?
Candace Rice.
Candace.
Candace Rice. We're gonna reappoint her, she's asked to be back on it?
Yep. Yes, sir.
I hear a motion to
I make a motion
Reappoint Candace?
I make a motion to reappoint Ms. Candace Moody Rice back to the board of the WWDA as she requested to be reappointed.
Okay, I hear a second.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? Okay. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair votes out. All right. Let's see, Fourth of July Firework Event. Y'all wanna do on that now?
Gentlemen, if I can put my two cents in here. I think if we can table this until we find out what sponsors we're gonna get, who we're gonna have to sponsor it this year. Cause I would hate for us to you know, say we're gonna pay this much now and then not get enough sponsors or get too many sponsors and then we pay too much. Does that make sense?
Well, I, yeah, it does, but to get a sponsor, I think, if we, we would tell them, we would match their funds or something. We might, we might get a better sponsor. I mean, you know, we might get some that would come.
Isn't that how we did it last year?
Yes, sir.
Huh?
Isn't that how we did it last year?
Right.
We said we were gonna
Match what they're gonna
Participate and we were gonna see what we could get as far as the
Right.
Sponsor schedules with the uh, intent of matching where we're
I mean, if we go somewhere and ask for sponsorship, says, hey, y'all give us a thousand dollars, we'll match your thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And it matters.
That encourages them.
And another thing
Madam Attorney?
Yeah.
I got a question on that. We, the Commissioners cannot, and the County Manager cannot ask for donations, right?
Uh, I don't see why you
Yeah.
Well, I mean, private donations toward that, I mean, I think that is allowable, yes.
And another thing, we, we, and I, too, with Timmy's talking about, but we, we not really saying in our mouth right now even to the city, we just saying that we gonna solicit uh, for, not vendors, but uh, people to contribute, vendors like we use, I guess, uh, whoever. And then we match whatever they give, you know, and we can put a cap on that, you know.
Yeah, that's what I figured, up to five thousand.
Yeah, yeah, we can put a cap on that, you know.
Because if you, you only needing twenty and the city gonna get ten, county get ten. So we, our limit is up to five. We match it up.
We, we, we were kinda short on time last year and we raised forty-two hundred dollars through corporate sponsorship, just county. And so we matched that with forty-two hundred dollars, but now that we can start early.
Right.
You know, we probably could get that or more.
Yeah.
I hear a motion that we uh, up to five thousand dollars, we match it.
Let me ask you something before do you think we need to put an amount right now or?
If just say participate, then we'll see what we can come up with. Kind of way we did, it was done that way last year.
But we're not gonna go over there.
No, no, that's basically it. You're, you're trying to get as close as you can to half of them, the
Right.
Show amount.
Right.
Which is ten thousand.
Yeah, well, I, I guess what you said was, we, we, we go up to five.
We, we can go up to that much. We get more in sponsorship than we have less.
We get carried off at five thousand dollars.
Right, okay. Yeah. We, I like to make that motion if that's
Okay.
You want to, with a cap at five thousand?
That, that
How that stipulated?
That the uh, county uh,
Participation.
participates up to five thousand dollars and uh, award the fireworks. I guess that'd be about the simplest legal way.
Okay. Got a motion?
Is that his, is that, you made that motion?
Yes.
He made the motion.
I'll second Mr. Burson's motion on that.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Let's, any more discussion on it? Not, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
And a chair vote out of that. Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, to piggyback on what Mr. Pope have, you know, been advocating. Since this is gonna be the last time, I mean, this is pretty much, that's, that's the given, it's gonna be the last time that we've able to do it into the city and uh, maybe at the terminal, maybe we can kinda look, kinda see and maybe between now and the next time, you know, we can get a strategy or whatever, as far as, mainly I think is to get people in and out, you know, uh, from there. And uh, like I said, it'd be a bigger event and hopefully we can uh, encourage the city to participate, just like we have in the city right now.
Okay.
For fireworks.
All right. Anything else? All right, County Manager report.
Uh, one thing we needed to add was that rezoning. I'm sorry, I left it off of the regular meeting agenda.
Rezoning?
The one that we had public hearing on.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir. From, from rezoning that uh, that parcel from residential to residential mobile home.
Okay.
Yep. And there, we just have
Do I have a motion? We need a motion and vote on it?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion to rezone that one.
I make a motion to rezone the
How you gonna say it? I ain't got it in.
R seventy-five, M H to R seventy-five mower.
Yeah, but who's it, who's is it? Go back and find it.
Longwood, Timly, won't it?
What is it, A, B, C, or D?
You can just reference, it was the subject of the public hearing today, and I think that'll be sufficient for the minutes.
Okay. Make it, okay. Did you hear what she said, Tim?
I did. The uh,
What she said?
I make a motion, we approve the rezoning. That was discussed in public hearing.
And I'll second Mr. Barnard's motion.
Got a motion and a second now. Do we have any discussion on it?
And that does not include the six hundred by twenty foot wide strip that they plan to commission recommended not to rezone?
Yeah.
It includes that.
Leave that strip out, I'm sorry. Okay. Anything else? Not, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Chair votes out. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before we close out, I'd like to make a motion that we go into Zigg's session, talk about personnel.
Okay, let's see, we're getting County Managers report.
Uh, no, sir, not at this time.
Okay. Commission comment. Okay, not, we go ahead and uh, personnel, I mean, uh, Zigg's session. Then we'll come back closing.
You get a second on that?
I have a motion to close out the executive session.
I want to sit down first.
All right, you want to sit down?
Yep.
So moved, Mr. Chair, that we come out of the executive session.
Okay, got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're out of the executive session. Now we're back in the work session.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting, that's right.
Commission item, we done done that? I hear a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion.
Who did?
I make the motion.
Got a second?
Second.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Okay, got it, got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
And Roger.